"Anti-trust Bill Gates" "That's why we have all these problems right now" "We should have never been allowed to bring these people here" "After the government declaring of anti-trust" "And who gave them all those visas for those 3,000 people to come here?" "Our government did it" "And also, okay, ask for the bill" "Ask for the bill for the financial district" "Let's make..." "Can you hear me?"
"Oh, we can hear you, honey"
"Ask for the bill for the financial district" "Let's make sure that the taxpayers don't have to pay" "For police rubber bullet holes through the windows" "We need to question who is determining all of this money" "That's gonna have to come out of our pockets anyway" "Also, I would like to say" "We need to thoroughly investigate harsh treatment" "This is for Larry Gosses" "Um, your tuition rights thing" "We need to thoroughly investigate harsh treatment to anyone" "And I A needs to also surrender records and complaints" "That have been covered up immediately" "Now, for the safety of everyone here" "Okay" "Now, I would also like to say that I was a peaceful protester" "And I still am, I'm a little radical, but I'm very peaceful" "I was gassed for linking arms" "To keep these, um, basically free slave traders" "From getting into the Paramount" "And I would also like to say from November 30th to December 3rd" "Six of some of these little panelists up here" "Okay, with God knows who else, right along with our mayor" "Suspended the Constitution and the Bill of Rights" "Okay, now, actually, the show of 'and'" "Because I know a lot of you realize" "That you should have listened to what was really going on here" "Before you did what you did" "That all participants in this action" "They are in direct violation" "Okay" "And I think that they need to be evaluated" "Now, do the right thing" "Um, so in life" "Um, my sole job is to get a lot of these people out of office" "Like Paul Sidran, okay" "And Mark Shell" "And don't understand the constitutional rights" "He can't have these type of people in office, okay" "We end up with problems like this, okay" "And I would just also like to say in reference to violence" "Our children, five, six, seven, teenagers, whatever, black, white" "Are carrying guns to school" "Okay" "Our children are suffering" "And I'll tell you why they're suffering" "Because of these video games" "Because of these so-called war heroes" "That always shoot and kill a bunch of people" "Now, I'm from Mobile, Alabama" "And I'm not gonna cry about me being gassed" "Okay" "Because I've been more than gassed and beaten" "But I would like to say" "That welfare cuts are gonna kill our children" "And that's what happened" "The mothers have been exploited" "And we have to work eight hours, okay" "Then fight for our communities" "And then we have to so-called go to work" "And take care of our children" "How are single parents supposed to do all this?"
"Excuse me, your time is up"
"I would just like to say one more thing" "It's also our white people" "That are also suffering from the welfare cuts" "So it's not just me, okay" "Thank you" "And rest in peace"
"Is Mark here?" "I'm sorry"
"There are chemicals that I don't want touching my skin"
"Um, did you speak at the last, uh, meeting?" "Uh, Mark, uh, if you would have something to do" "Let's go ahead and do it"
"Let's do it" "I just spoke to him" "Here, um, we're gonna give him 30 seconds of our time" "When we finish" "Because I'm speaking, which ruthlessly out of his name" "But we're the raging red" "And we're here in solidarity" "With the people of Seattle" "And especially those who got gassed" "Clubbed, pepper sprayed, curfewed" "Rubber bulleted, shot, kicked, and jailed" "And if I left something out, we're with them too" "Especially with people" "For exercising their right to free speech" "And peaceful assembly"
"When violence" "Has been erased" "When violence has been erased" "How I want to be in that number" "When property stops being king" "When corporate greed stops being king" "How I want to be in that number" "When property stops being king" "That corporate rule is history" "That corporate rule is history" "How I want to be in that number" "When corporate rule is history" "When people see, on first of all" "How people see, on first of all" "How I want to be in that number" "When people see, on first of all" "Since there is justice on the earth" "When there is justice on the earth" "How I want to be in that number" "When there is justice on the earth"
"Okay, I've got 30 seconds to show you" "What the police were using on us" "I'm Mark Taylor Cantwell" "With the Capitol Hill Community Council" "They've asked me to serve on their police relations board" "And I wanna show you some of the evidence" "That we've collected" "These are rubber dowels" "These were being shot from some kind of air rifle" "At approximately 300 feet per second" "Sometimes at point-blanket, folks" "Uh, these are wooden dowels" "These were also shot from the same kinds of rifles" "The reason I'm, I've got gloves on" "Is because some of these have, uh, some kind of chemical traces on them" "Possibly from tear gas canisters" "Or from being used in the same weapon" "As something that had tear gas canisters in it" "Uh, whatever it is, it burns the skin" "I found that out personally" "We've also got tear gas canisters" "And one of them looks like this" "And what this is called is a tactical grenade" "Okay, this is created by someone" "At the Defense Technology Corporation of America" "We got a serial number NO98CS" "This is CS gas" "This is pepper spray" "All right, but it has some sort of incendiary device" "Because on the bottom, it seems to be burned" "And I think what it does is it probably sprays out" "Some sort of a fog" "Which would be a pepper spray fog" "We've also got one small little, um, metal dowel" "Which also was some kind of incendiary device" "Okay, it looks like this" "It's the same size as the wooden dowels and the rubber dowels" "But it's metal" "And it's obviously been on fire at some point" "Because it's, um, got burn marks all over it" "We believe that these were also shot" "From the same kinds of weapons" "We also have the top of some kind of grenade" "Which I'm not sure" "And, you know, of course, anybody in the media" "That wants to look at this stuff" "I can give you some good visuals later" "But this is the top of a larger grenade" "We believe that this was probably a concussion grenade" "And if you all looked on The Stranger" "Could you possibly hand me that?" "This is the front page of a local magazine" "Called The Stranger" "And it shows a canister of what is called CN gas" "Okay, CN gas, um, actually, from experts" "We found out, causes disorientation, dizziness" "And it's used against crowds" "And against the enemy during wartime" "To disorient them" "So that they can't communicate or strategize" "About how to respond to the defensive posture" "That you are, you are using against them" "So this has all been documented" "And there are plenty of people in Seattle" "Who are looking into these issues" "Of what chemicals were used" "Against the citizens of Seattle" "Including how did it possibly poison the water supply" "Since clouds of gas were hovering over the reservoir" "On Capitol Hill" "And the Capitol Hill Community Council" "Is looking into all of these issues" "So that we can find out what the effects of this gas are" "Thank you very much"
"I'm a Seattle resident" "I was downtown every day" "From Friday, November 26th" "Through Friday, December 3rd" "And I marched in five peaceful protests" "I was there because I had concerns" "About the damage globalization" "And the rules of the World Trade Organization" "Have had and are having on the planet" "And many of its inhabitants" "I'm opposed to any form of violence" "And was saddened by the senseless destruction" "Which took place downtown" "However, I believe the lamentable violence" "Against local businesses" "Pales into insignificance" "Compared with the violence perpetuated" "By a global trade system" "Which maximizes profits" "In the use of child labor" "Sweatshops, biopiracy" "And the devastation of the environment" "Through the excessive use of irreplaceable resources" "In the production of looters and toxic waste" "While I do not condone the property damage" "Inflicted by the looters" "I urge you to recognize" "That many of us wanted to prevent" "The WTO from engaging in deliberations" "Which would have led to further deregulation of trade" "And fewer restrictions on the activities" "Of transnational corporations" "Whose pursuit of profit at any cost" "Is losing the planet's resources" "On a global scale" "Most of the concerns with the peaceful protesters" "Are not lost" "In the debate about who is to blame" "For the violence which did occur" "Which I was fortunate not to encounter" "Our society needs to move in the direction" "Of developing an alternative, sustainable economic system" "Which is community-based" "And owned and controlled locally" "For the benefit of the people" "Rather than for the benefit" "Of transnational corporations"
"Good evening" "As you can see, I am a member" "Of the October 22nd Coalition" "Against Police Brutality" "Place of their meeting" "The 18 Douglas Truth Library" "23 P S L at 3 P M" "Police brutality is nothing new" "My husband and I have been victims" "To the Tacoma Police" "I was gassed at three, uh, low after 3 o'clock" "In the afternoon while riding a city bus" "When they had just turned the corner off 3rd" "There were two other buses stuck in a traffic jam" "The fools fled off canisters" "No more than 50"
"Okay, first, we were told" "There would be the WTO here" "The streets would be full of protesters" "Certain streets closed" "Don't plan on getting through downtown" "A celebration of free speech" "Then Tuesday came" "Police everywhere, but a long route" "Planning, we heard now, to make mass arrests" "There were just too many people" "Out concerned for all people's rights and fairness" "So much for a celebration of free speech" "After the damage done by admitted anarchists" "Which the cameras followed" "But no police could respond to" "Until a bus driver was flattened" "By hours" "A state of emergency was claimed and a curfew" "I called the mayor's office" "To ask him what the grounds for the state of emergency was" "And I was told it was dark" "No one on the streets" "Serious, no one on the street" "Knew anything about either of us" "The police had no conversation" "With the protesters, we were told, over and over" "Just waiting for orders" "We're supposed to congratulate the restraint" "And hold the long hours?" "Wrong" "I believe if they'd been issued live ammunition" "They would have been happy to use it" "Along with their hidden identities" "Oh, they were supposed to have names visible" "Their hit, their clubs hitting the ground" "Like a bunch of ignorant bullies" "Their chemicals, their peacekeepers" "And their guardian" "Oh, but we should celebrate their restraint" "Why? Because they didn't have real bullets?" "There's no celebration" "It doesn't take a weatherman" "To see which way the wind blows" "And then states coming off" "The Nazis in the street" "The heroes are the people" "Coming to stand up for our freedom" "And the Seattle Fire Department" "For refusing to be indicted" "Violence, and though bad for those affected" "Is a non-violent American way of protest" "Did you ever hear of the Boston Tea Party?" "Our right to bear arms should be fortified, not reduced" "It was a fight" "It was to fight the King's army" "As it came after you or your countrymen" "That's why it's in the Bill of Rights" "Now the King's army has weapons" "Of all sizes and destruction" "And we're supposed to just roll over and let them" "And the nerve" "If people had just dispersed when they were told to" "Then the Gestapo could take care of the real protesters" "Everything would have been fine" "No" "Without warning, the SS attacked everyone" "Driving them beyond what they named as boundaries" "Hoping everyone would quit watching" "And let them spray, beat, and shoot at people" "Oh, and not forget the SPD cars" "Who drove right into people sitting on the streets" "I think the veterans of America" "Should be outraged at the horrors" "They've suffered for our freedom" "That is compromised on a daily basis" "In the United States" "This is America" "If you wish it was Singapore" "Or China, Iran, Russia, etc." "Move there" "Go for it here" "Luckily, the WTO conference" "Was here in rural middle Seattle" "The city would have been on fire" "The National Guard should have been here" "To protect people from the police" "Any state of the week" "That wanna go to King County" "Are the cream of the Nazis" "And should be on their way out with Third Reich Reichardt" "Get out of the city" "If it had been handled like it was Thursday and Friday" "It would have been no trouble" "I'll probably be met by the Red Guard" "Contras and Gestapo on my way out" "And at home" "But I say, question authority" "Power to the people" "Remember, just following orders" "Was the excuse at Nuremberg"
"About civil rights" "I have been telling my employees" "For 13 years" "That the police are not their enemy" "And that they're mistaken or paranoid" "And I have dated a cop once" "I'm gonna admit it" "And I've spoken" "And I have police officers in my shop" "My book store" "My name is Jamie London" "I own Toy Soul Tales" "Somebody in my area" "I wanna, and I know people" "On the city council" "Because you guys helped me save my business" "From Zapp Transit, the ones who took my side" "And you were very nice to me" "And you know who you are" "The ones who did work for me" "Well, I know who you are too" "I just wanna say" "That one of, that I wanna know" "Who is responsible" "I wanna know the names" "Of who is responsible for hurting" "The protesters up to my home" "And my neighborhood twice" "And tear gassing bystanders twice" "Without reading the riot act" "Without reading the riot act" "Without announcing a curfew" "People coming out of the bars" "People coming out of bookstores" "People coming from trying to change their tire" "People trying to just get home" "From their college classes" "People who are out on the streets till 2:00 in the morning" "My store is open till 2:00 in the morning" "People trying to live their lives on Capitol Hill" "It is the highest population" "In the United, no, north of San Francisco" "The highest population neighborhood" "North of San Francisco" "It has the highest, it has canyon-like streets" "Apartments" "Who the hell thought tear gas" "Was a good idea there?" "Come on" "Who thought tear gas was a good idea there?" "I'm, I have to tell you" "I'm not gonna say anything about the WTO" "Other people have" "I'm not gonna say anything about the protesters" "Other people have" "I'm gonna ask people here" "This board" "Find out for me" "The name of the man or the woman" "Who said it was a good idea" "To hurt protesters up to my neighborhood" "And tear gas them" "Without reading the riot act" "Without declaring curfew" "Because I want that man's metaphorical head" "I'm not gonna say" "Anything about a Nazi state" "I'm not gonna say anything about anything like that" "Because that's people's opinions" "That aren't mine" "I'm here just to say" "To Peter" "And to Richard McGyver" "And everybody else here" "We will remember this day" "When Boden Day comes" "And by the way" "My gay and lesbian customers" "My transactional" "And gentlemen of the city council" "Honored guests"
"My name is Claireville Housefrau" "And I'm just a middle-aged, middle-class housewife" "And therefore extremely militant" "I'm a second-generation property owner" "Of the city of Seattle" "I attended my first protest demonstration" "In 1964" "When I was a student at Stanford University" "On the afternoon of November 30th, 1999" "I had just finished marching" "From the city center" "To Paramount Theater" "With thousands of Union men" "I always liked to march" "With big, strong men" "Who have hard hats" "The march was absolutely peaceful" "It's better with a Union man" "As I passed a contingent of policemen" "During the march" "I thanked them" "As I always do" "Saying, 'Thank you for taking care of us' "They looked at me" "As if I had said something sarcastic" "But when I got to the Paramount Theater" "I saw two things which brightened me" "I saw four very large policemen" "Sitting on four very large horses" "All eight of them were wearing gas masks" "I didn't even know" "They made gas masks for horses" "Then I saw a young man" "Dressed in black" "With a bandana over his face" "And he was wearing a gas mask too" "At that moment" "I turned to my friend" "And I said" "This does not inspire me with confidence" "It only takes one person" "To start a riot" "Let's get the heck out of here" "The rule is, you see, my dear friends" "When there is trouble" "Melt into the crowd of spectators and disappear" "It is the first rule of protest marching" "I have been at this for a very long time" "But there weren't spectators" "Parade marshals" "Lots of them wearing orange hats" "It was, so sorry" "Thank you very much"
"I had great people" "That came here from all over the world" "And they, that first week" "When I drove them here" "To their hotel rooms and stuff" "They were all impressed about" "American volunteerism" "And the ability, the rights of free speech here" "And all this" "And boy, did Seattle" "Give a good end to this year" "The century and the millennium"
"And proud of it"
"I, the second week" "The week of the WTO" "I worked with security at the conference center" "I heard the protesters" "Marching during the day on Tuesday" "And I heard the loud noise and everything" "From all of the protesters that were in town" "And 40,000 of them" "Was gonna be a lot of noise" "And I heard a lot about free speech" "When I was standing at the door" "Looking at people in and out" "From my standpoint" "The officers that I was involved with" "Were very respectful of people's rights" "And, I'm not saying everybody was maybe" "But they were, from my standpoint" "And I can't speak for the rest of the volunteers" "That have to speak for themselves" "I don't know that there's many of them here" "Seems like most of them here" "Have had some other confrontation" "Or meeting with the police" "From what I could see, from where I stood" "They were doing a good job" "I don't know when it went wrong" "The first afternoon, when I left work" "I was denied" "The right to freely passage" "From the Sheraton to a bus stop" "By the non-violent protesters" "They didn't hurt me" "They wouldn't let me through" "They pushed me up against the wall of the Sheraton" "Okay, I won't take much more time" "Uh, once again" "I come from the other side" "I believe in freer trade" "I believe in the WTO with changes" "They need to change" "But we have to have a forum" "Where all the countries can come together" "And make commitments" "And decide what's gonna be done" "Because you cannot live" "Within your own country anymore" "It's a world economy" "It is a world of nations" "And we all have to talk and get together"
"Well, if we live in a world economy" "That guess that means" "We need world solidarity and world democracy, eh?" "Now, I'm here to talk about three things" "One, reparations" "Two, accountability" "And three, social and industrial democracy" "Reparations" "The six people on this council" "That endorsed the state of emergency" "That all parent, mo, that" "The mayor called for" "They need to be recalled" "The audience, Ron Sims and Gary Locke" "Not here because they are also responsible" "What we saw on the streets" "And what we heard about in the jails" "Is a manifestation of something" "That's been going on in Seattle" "For a very long time" "Especially among people" "In the African-American heritage" "African heritage community" "I'm gonna ask the city council" "That they ask the school board" "To turn over the old Coleman School" "Over to the African-American Heritage" "Museum and Cultural Center" "As part of reparations" "For all of that" "Including what happened to Class C" "Now, as far as the democracy" "And accountability part" "This is what I propose as a solution" "One, a community-elected" "Police review board" "With the power to subpoena and prosecute" "Each neighborhood we get to elect one" "A popular elected council" "That would guide the policies" "Of the police department on all levels" "And how do we enforce that?" And how do we enforce that? Well, we have an election process, but we also have the labor unions. If every labor union in town got together and elected somebody from their local, or if anybody who's even not unioned wanted to get together and elect somebody, and form what was called an oversight council, if the city government and these councils didn't do what was mandated by the people of the community, then they could just simply shut down all nonessential services in the city. That's called economic democracy. And that would definitely scare folks because that's direct accountability. Because let's face it, the people that control this city, it ain't necessarily just the government, it's the people that own the companies in this town. So that's what I propose as a solution. And we have a referendum process that we can use, that can also be used.
My question is, how is it so easy for you to take away my civil rights as an American citizen? I live in the no protest zone, and I have for seven years. For a few days, you decided, you're not saying that it was anything to do with you, Mr. Ackerman, but it did have something to do with the Seattle City Council that there was a civil emergency call. You're supposed to be the ones who decide that that can be done after the mayor says so. Am I wrong? From the Seattle municipal code, you do have something to do with the civil emergency being called. No comment? I think one of the reasons my rights were taken away so easily is that you, the Seattle City Council, have been doing it all along, starting with the poster ban. I didn't have the right to post my political opinions. This is sort of unique to Seattle, and I really don't know how it happened, but the more I read, the more I'm outraged. Yeah, that's right, Mark Sidran. We can name names here. The Seattle City Council also passed a series of civility laws, what you call civility laws, saying that people, mostly aimed at the homeless, but not being able to legally say that, I think you made some really weird laws, like no sitting laws, pedestrian interference laws. And these laws have led, I think, to an increased amount of police brutality. Because as a downtown resident, a lot of times what I see is a policeman harassing a homeless person, which is really incredible. The rights and you're taking their rights away more and more. And I think that you really have to look at yourselves, not point the finger outside the Seattle City Council, for now anyway. So I've been, let's see. Basically, I want to say that the police should really be held accountable for what they've done. And we do need to see names, like this woman said earlier. We want to see names. We want to see which police officers are brutalizing others. Couple of good slogans I printed this week that I think you should hear. "The right to shop is not more important than the right to freedom of speech." "Can be repaired, but our faith in the Seattle Police Department cannot be repaired."
So you know where we are. There are about 150 people signed up. Mark Rose, you're here as number 20. Robert Skilstad is next, 21. 22 is Robert.
I'm here today to say a few words in defense of the Constitution. As a veteran of the United States Air Force, I took an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States. I understood that that commitment might have entailed extreme sacrifice to include the possibility of giving my own life or taking the life of another human being. I believe the Constitution warrants extreme commitment. I expect a similarly extreme expression of commitment to the defense of the Constitution from my government, be it city, county, state, or federal. The Declaration of Independence states that we are, quote, "endowed with certain inalienable rights", that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it. In the wake of WTO protests and government response towards those protests, I am plagued by doubt about my city's commitment to secure liberty and to defend the rights set forth in the First Amendment. I cannot abide the proposition that an arcane law pertaining to the state of a civil emergency abrogates the full force and effect of our national constitution. The establishment of a perimeter beyond which peaceable protest could result in an arrest in accordance with state law is not only unconstitutional, but unconscionable. Furthermore, to those protesters who sought to limit or block the free expression of ideas contrary to their own, I must say your actions were equally unconstitutional and unconscionable. Finally, globalization is an emerging reality. Whether one views it skeptically or optimistically, it will impact all of us. We must encourage a healthy, open, public debate. We must not let a small, unlawful minority usurp our right to speak freely on this or any other issue, whether they hide behind a mask, riot gear, or an office of public trust. Thank you.
Sorry, where are you, Mark?
That's Robert Kenyon.
I'm sorry. Robert Kenyon, number 22, followed by Ben Schroder, number 23.
My name is Robert Kenyon. I'm a locked-out steelworker in Spokane, Washington. Been locked out for fourteen and a half months. We thought we'd come over here and fight the WTO in peaceful manner. Been living in the streets for the last week during the administrative meeting, so I got to see a lot of shit. One morning, we left Port 20 Denny. We were going down the street. There was a lot of young people with us. And we were taking our banners and our flags and protesting equipment. Police pulled up with their weapons, surrounded us, took all our stuff away from us, arrested three people. I don't know why. One of the police officers stood and talked to me like he was my buddy. I think, I think he thought I wasn't with them. I didn't have any long hair. I didn't have any earrings. Now I was older. We worked our way down to the Denny Park. We left there after it got light. And there were probably about 200 of us. We got into this oddly shaped intersection where there was multiple streets coming in. We were blocked by a couple hundred of these white or black cops, robo-cops. And they told us to disperse. We knew what was probably gonna happen. One of my friends, we gave each other a hug. There were two-thirds of us, we stood back, were stand-ways. The cops then pounced down on these people. They hit them with their billy clubs. They shoved them, knocked them to the ground. One person, his face was run into the ground with his cop's knee and held there. His glasses were shoved up into his, above his eye. Couple of other people were grabbed by the hair and jerked around like rag dolls. One of these was a young girl. Her hair went down to the middle of her back. This one cop jerked her around for a while and drove her off to the side, jerked her around some more before he put the cuffs on her. He threw everybody into the, a small paddy wagon and a bus. At that time, I noticed a bunch of National Guarders coming in behind us. I knew they were gonna sandwich everybody. A few of us managed to slip off to one side. That was the last time I seen those people until after they got out of jail. I was up on Capitol Hill when everybody got gassed up there. I was up on Capitol Hill. I think it was Wednesday night. I'm not sure because all the days they kind of blend together, the days and nights. There was a couple hundred of us just standing around. The cops were up there complaining with their guns. I mean, it sounded like a war. A real war zone. Couple of kids, they tried to turn over this garbage can and started on fire with the people there. The people that lived there came out and physically stopped these kids, put this garbage can back up. The cops, we didn't do anything wrong. They started teargassing us. We had to run out of there. We couldn't see what we were doing or anything. And one of the businesses there allowed me and his place and where I got cleaned up.
Robert, I'm sorry, but there are other people whose time is... 23 is David. 24 is Celia Alario. 25, David Reed. Is Ben here? Ben? Let's go on to Celia Alario, number 24.
Good evening. My name is Celia Alario, and I'm a publicist and a grassroots organizer. I've worked with a number of organizations over the last 10 years and in preparation for the week of the WTO, ranging from the Rainforest Action Network to the United Steelworkers of America. It's really hard to condense what I have seen because I was in the streets all week and I've also been viewing and logging videotape over the last 48 hours. So to give you three minutes of a snivid is kind of tough. But I'm gonna leave with a couple of questions for Irene to write up, including, I'd like to know who hired and who knew about confidential data services mobile shredding unit, which was parked outside the Public Services Building at the beginning of last week for about four hours. Some of you are looking puzzled, some of you not. Maybe you know about this, maybe you don't. But they had on this mobile unit a bunch of shredders. There were boxes and boxes of things that were brought down and shredded all day at the beginning of last week. And I'm curious who hired them, who paid for them, who knew about, yeah, obviously, what were they shredding and who knew about that. One of the other questions that I have is what is it going to take to create a space so that the municipal bus drivers can come forward and safely tell their story? They drove many, actually, they drove down many of the police offices in the morning in preparation for the 30th. And they have some very interesting stories to tell, if you happen to meet one in a pub or what have you, about the kind of language and mood and orientation that the police were in and the way they addressed and talked about their coming day tasks. The thing I want to share with you is something that personally I witnessed, which was on Wednesday morning at the corner of, I believe, 6th and Pike, but I'm not positive. I know it was 6th and something. I was standing in the corner talking to a reporter from the Wall Street Journal and a reporter from the Post, who were facing me and had their back to the corner that I was viewing. There were four or five policemen on horses and some riot cops massing behind them. And there were some people drumming on one corner. We were milling around on another corner. Things were fairly peaceful. Didn't seem like too much was going on. I saw, I noticed that there was a gentleman, who I later found out was Victor Minotti of the International Forum on Globalization, which is a policy organization, who was standing in the corner addressing a few people. He had just come from a meeting with Charlene Barczewski's office about the global free-living agreement. He was merely addressing a few people in the corner, giving an update about his meeting. Six or eight cops running two by two in riot gear with their batons out, charged across the street at full speed, tackled a crowd of people, except the 10 people that were the crowd that were listening to him. They fell away. They grabbed Victor only and dragged him away. Later, I was talking with a journalist from the UPI who confirmed that he heard two undercover policemen saying, "That guy over there, that's our guy." And he looked into the window of the bagel shop and noted that they were talking about Victor Minotti. Didn't think too much about it. He just met Victor at a press conference. We pieced it together. So another question for Irene would be, who else was giving orders here? Who were the levels of plainclothes people that were on the streets? The last thing I'll say in closing is that I've been involved in both the planning and execution of numerous direct actions over the last eight years. Small actions involve 20 to 30 people, and mass actions involving hundreds of thousands of people. In those actions, and as we tried to do on the streets, we had police liaisons. We had people whose job it was to interface with the police, find out what was going on. Why didn't that happen? Why weren't dispersal orders given? Why weren't they given loudly enough so that people who maybe wanted to leave with their children before the chemical warfare started could get out? And why were the efforts that went on with groups like the Ruckus Society to meet in advance with the police and the mayor's office not closely scrutinized by the council and other people who could have actually averted all this? So those are just some of my questions.
Celia, they did use asking Irene to put questions up. I'd encourage you, if you have questions you'd like us to post and care for our future use, that you do that. Next is David. Is that you? Did we miss you along the way here? Go ahead. That's fine.
There are a lot of people that came in from out of town for protests from around the country and around the globe. And I was really proud to tell them that they didn't have to worry about the Seattle police, that as a lifelong Seattle resident, that as police forces go in this country, they're pretty well behaved. And it was very embarrassing to have the display of force that was shown. I marched from the Teamsters Rally from Memorial Stadium. The media said it was 20 or 30,000 people, so they must have been followed by another 30 or 40,000 members of the press and legal observers. You know, the only thing that I saw as everyone else is testifying is horrible police abuses. And, you know, all I can say is that, yes, a bunch of very peaceful protesters were attacked with no warning, no anything. I was included in that. And, you know, I mean, these protesters were highly trained to not riot on a level of training that we've never seen before. I mean, for weeks and weeks, they were training. The police were trained for riot, and that's exactly what you got. If anything's gonna come of this disaster or fiasco in Seattle, that's gonna come of the review of all these events, we need to find out exactly who was ordering what. I talked to a lot of police officers over the course of time, and everyone had indicated, all the police officers had indicated that the response to peaceful demonstrators was to let them get cold and tired, and they would eventually go home. That did not occur. So we need to find out who ordered these attacks on innocent protesters. An honest effort must also be made to locate, identify, and prosecute the individual officers who made an assault on some innocent citizens and protesters, such as the ones that, you know, we saw. I made an honest effort on the council's part to find these people. And furthermore, we need to make a policy in this city, at the very least, if not the county too, that all police on protest lines from here on out must have visible identification. I walked very often along and tried to ask the officers their names. They refused to identify themselves. They know they were wrong. Anyway, if that much policy can come out of it, at least something's gotten done. Thank you.
25 is David Reed. Followed by 26, George Beckland. 27 is John Murray.
I'm David Reed from Spokane, Washington, a locked-out steelworker. I headed down to Denny Park on Wednesday, December 1st. There was about 100, 200 nonviolent sea turtles and protesters. And myself. We left the park around 7:30, marched two blocks to the West Lake intersection where we were stopped by a police lineup. We stood, we stopped and stood there for a couple of seconds or less. I heard a muffled megaphone. I was grabbed from the right side, thrown to the ground, smashed into the basket, handcuffed, lifted to my feet, and taken to the curb. Then I felt the back, felt the knee into my back again, and it was very painful. I asked the officer why. I was cooperating. I looked around to see people, blood coming out of their face, other people being throwed around, people being drug around. I looked at him and I said, "Hey, I'm cooperating. Why are you doing this?" I was very lucky. I spent five days in jail. The treatment in King County was horrible, horrifying, excuse me. My rights were violated. No phone calls, no lawyer, no medical treatment for three days. I want to thank all the supporters outside the jails. For without that support, a lot of us wouldn't have made it. I know I wouldn't have made it. I was going crazy in there. And every time I looked out and I saw the supporters out there, dancing and drumming, it gave me the courage to go on. This is the way, this is the way we're gonna do it, though. All of us coming together, sticking together, and not letting them get away with this crap.
My name is George Bacon. I'm the owner of the Seattle Gay News and an editor and a longtime activist in the city of Seattle. First of all, thank you to the council members and thank you to the audience. I find these hearings that quote Mrs. Steinberg riveting. I'm extremely angry, however. My anger has not abated. In fact, it's increased. I was gassed as a spectator. I wasn't involved in the protests. And I was sick as a dog for four days. I guarantee you, something was in the tear gas. I discovered yesterday there's a task for residual chemical agents can be given at the Mason Clinic, or my medical providers are researching how to give it to me. And I think it's very critical that we understand clearly what happened and why people like myself were sick as a dog for four days after being gassed. I'm extremely concerned about the police rioting. I have to give you a backdrop. This is the third police riot in a decade that I've witnessed. These things have happened on Capitol Hill before. However, the attention given to the police misconduct in those cases was minimal compared to this week. to this week. I'd like to address the issue of why the cops always push the riot to Capitol Hill, and it's very simple, because that's where the pickles and the commies and the undesirables live. Let's get really honest about why they do it. Because they think they can get away with beating people up, and there will never be more than a question asked. And nobody cares, exactly. Well, this is the new Capitol Hill, the condos are $300,000, and a lot of people care. I was extremely unhappy with the suspension of civil liberties. At heart, I'm a civil libertarian, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights are not jokes to me, they're the bastion of the democracy I cherish. And the way it was done was clumsy and ineffective. I wondered, would I be able to distribute my newspaper on Friday, having to drive through downtown? There were unanswered questions all around. The other thing that concerns me is the truth of the matter is that police were out of control, they were insubordinate and insurrection, and it's not okay. In America, civilians control the military, the civilians control the National Guard, and the civilians should be controlling the police force. I've never elected a policeman in my life, but I have elected city council members and a mayor, and they abdicate their responsibility to control the police department in Seattle, and that makes me very angry. I would like to deplore the jail, I went down to some of the protests, but I was in jail. And in my worst fantasy, I never conceived of people being jailed as political prisoners in the city of Seattle, hold four and five days without medical attention, benefit of attorneys, and any civil process. And it's a total breakdown, it's absolutely disgraceful, and it's the last place in America I thought that would ever happen. To the citizens of my province, I would like to support the call for not a civilian review board, but elected police commissioners who control the police department in the city of Seattle. It's true, in other cities, we obviously need it here. We need a commission elected by the citizens to run the police department, because obviously the police have been out of control before, and this will happen again, without civilian control of the police department. Thank you.
The next speaker is John Murray, followed by Aria, and then there'll be a video presentation. Is John Murray here?
Yes, I spoke out of her.
Okay, how about Aria?
Get the other job.
Okay, then let's, are you ready to go with the video? Okay, then Victoria Garvey.
Give him a chance. Woo, Ayo!
Who are you?
I'm Ania.
Okay, you're up.
My name is Aria, I'm originally from Iran. I came to the United States eleven years ago, I'm a US citizen now. I have held many jobs so far, in many of which I have been discriminated for my national origin. Despite all my effort, I have failed to maintain a job. All I effort to fight for my rights have failed. In spite of my wish, I'm unemployed and homeless as of today. I'm one among many of the victims, victims created by corporate greed that has no respect for human rights. I am among many who would like to see justice and human rights improved. No to corporate rule, no to corporate media, long live people! I love you all.
Mr. Baumgartner, are you here to do the video presentation, if you want me to start? Well, let's go ahead, is Victoria Gentry available? We'll hear her first, and then go ahead there.
Hi, I'm Victoria, and I own two businesses on Second Avenue. And there's a lot of different issues here that I could talk about, but I feel like I have, my primary responsibilities to my employees are their safety and health and well-being, and environment that fosters their economic prosperity as well as personal growth and education. And on Wednesday the first, two male and one female police officers in uniform came into my business, Bank Corporation. And they said that there was a curfew in effect, and that we had to close, and the staff had to be out of downtown by 7:00 PM. So we closed at 6:00 PM, and the employees and the customers left. Two of the male employees were walking home, and at 6:15, they were trying to make their way to Capitol Hill, and there were no buses available for them to get there. So as they walked up Third towards downtown, at Third and Stewart, they were hit with tear gas, and were pushed back by the officers towards Belltown. They tried to go around another way and get up the hill, and they were unable to, and they had to walk up the hill on Denny. The one gentleman began vomiting and having difficulty breathing. Both of the gentlemen have compromised immune systems, the one gentleman has AIDS, and since then, he has symptoms of pneumonia, and his doctor told him that he is not the only person with AIDS that was exposed to the gas that is having these symptoms. This is life-threatening for him. I feel like it's my responsibility for their safety during business hours, and this was during business hours, they were instructed to leave, and then they were gassed on their way home, so I hold the police responsible for their injuries. The rest of the employees of their companies had experienced loss of wages, the customers were not afraid of the protesters, as I've discussed this at great length in the salon environment there, they were afraid of the police. And so I feel like they inhibited the economic prosperity of the employees as well for their commission on their sales and for their salon services, so I'm here to speak for them. As far as the educational commitment that I feel like I have to them, I guess I could thank the police department for radicalizing the staff in a way that I've never been able to do in the past. I feel like I want the police to pay for what they did, and not just for the loss of business for the employees, but definitely for the health benefits. And if anything happens to their health that's a long-term effect, then they're definitely going to pay dearly for that.
Video presentation, is Michelle Grant available? That's number 31, followed by Harriet Walden, I think it is, number 32, and Cynthia Wobble. So next would be Michelle Grant, is Michelle here?
She's coming. Hi, my name is Michelle Grant. My husband, Thomas Buttel, and my six-month-old daughter and I live at 15th and Roy on Capitol Hill. My husband and I operate a small software company out of our home. We pay our taxes and we pay our mortgage every month, and we vote. We live about five blocks uphill from the intersection where the police stopped their advance on Broadway on Wednesday night, the first of December. I want to know a few things. First, I want to know, constitutional issues about a no protest zone aside, why Mayor Shell declared a no protest zone that ended at the freeway, and then let his police force advance on the Capitol Hill? As I've noticed and victims have related in this and other forums, the police in the end were attacking uninvolved residents in my neighborhood. I want to know why the mayor did not stop his police. Second, I want to know what chemical agents were used against protesters and the uninvolved residents of Capitol Hill. I want to know what landed in the reservoir, and what I may have ingested because it landed there, especially since I'm still breastfeeding my six-month-old baby. Pepper spray, police-issued tear gas, or the military-issued tear gas, some people are alleging, whatever, I want full disclosure of the composition of what was used on my neighbors. I want to know how I should explain to my daughter the actions of the police when I took her downtown for a day of peaceful protests on November 30th. One minute we were dancing in the street, the next minute we saw thousands of people running from tear gas and rubber bullets on Fourth Avenue. We heard detonations, gunfire, and screams. There were children and babies in that peaceful crowd of thirty thousand people, they weren't breaking windows. Lawrence, I want to know how a few broken windows justify the actions of the police. You can't commit violence on a building, but the police answered, some people said paused, the police answered vandalism with violence on people. The mayor and the media keep talking about financial hardship on downtown businesses. Well, how about the hardship caused by police injuring people without warning, without pause, and that's outside the no protest zone. Window breaking is vandalism. The physical harm caused by tear gas, rubber bullets, and batons is real violence. Finally, I want to know that the accountability doesn't stop with these hearings. There are at least three people who need to admit that what they did was just plain wrong. Those people are Mayor Shell, the Chief of Police, Norm Stanford, and King County Sheriff Dave Wright. There was violent police action against nonviolent protesters and innocent people, and these men and the local media need to say so. That's what they need to say, I'll repeat it, and they can quote me. There was violent action against nonviolent protesters and innocent people. I want accountability, not healing and moving on. I did my healing by distributing a thousand leaflets on Broadway and Pine Street last week, asking my neighbors on Capitol Hill to write down their accounts of police misconduct and send them to the mayor and the city council. What I want is a full, public, independent investigation that ends in the city paying a lot of money to a lot of people whose reparations for severe violations of civil rights and human rights. And in order to see this done, I continue to urge people, as I did with my gas leaflets, to write your officials and the ACLU. Paper mail is better than email, send copies to the newspapers and the TV stations, because they still aren't reporting it right. I want my daughter...
I told they can dim some lights, is that right? Somebody out there that can dim some lights?
So they can show the video?
At any rate, I'm Trevor Baumgartner, I'm lucky enough to present this on behalf of the Independent Media Center. Just to let you know, they're screening a five-part series Thursday, 6:00 PM and 8:30 PM at the Park Room, 163 South Jackson, and this weekend, Friday and Saturday, at the Independent Media Center. Saturday, Michael Ferranti from Spirithead will be speaking, doing some public work there. So anyway, here is, this was put together today. I haven't seen it yet, but a woman, a woman mentioned a man named Victor Manotti, and how he was kidnapped by the police. That's on this video. It's after 8:00 PM. The audio is really important, so it's really important to focus and keep your paws and boos down. Focus your ears and your eyes.
And focus the picture.
Okay, we're gonna work on the focus, if you just be patient with us. We're just working with this machine here.
Can you guys sit down?
Yeah, well, it'll all get sorted out, okay? We're working the best we can, all right? So at any rate, I'll just keep plugging the IMC. Once again, Thursday at 6:00 and 8:30 PM, 163 South Jackson Street on the third floor, they're showing the five-part video series that was shot from the streets, but also from things that happened outside of the streets. It's a, from what I understand, it's a fairly comprehensive picture of the entire event. And then again, and Saturday with Michael Ferranti from Spirithead.
What's your phone number?
Okay, they're gonna show the kidnapping, after, this video's gonna rewind, and then go into slow motion. I think that's where they show the kidnapping, is that, or they show the police kicking somebody in the groin, right after the rewind? So pay attention, focus your attention there.
Did they give you any warning?
No, please, sorry, but I looked at the guy, he was very angry, I was very angry. No, I looked at the media, so I'm glad for me, they were excited, you know.
I am not struggling, I am peaceful, I am not scared, I am not...
Be moving back.
Yeah, Markiplier was frightened.
Yeah.
They didn't kill anybody, why?
We were not asked to disperse, we were arrested, there were people that were put aside, there were people who would walk to the side, who were told they were not gonna be arrested if they walked to the side. Then barricaded in and charged, they were told to leave, they were just charged, they were charged in, or not charged, they were charged, that's what I mean, charged in full time. And was the more interested in covering, you know, the chaos, Victor Manotti, what's going on?
So I go to there, and it ends up being a certified NGO who's in the conference, listening to all the closed-door legislation they're doing, and it's Victor Manotti.
That's Victor Manotti right there, in the black bread.
Waiting to the left to move, on Fourth Avenue, behind a police corridor, and they opened up, they sipped in, they popped open the door, they threw Victor in, and they were gone. And it was that quick.
My name is Elliot Walden, and I'm speaking for Mothers for Police Accountability. I'd like to thank the Seattle Police Department for actually making our work have credibility. For nine years, and I've talked about police accountability and police brutality, and it is a righteous issue. And we stand here with everyone else that was part of this ugliness in Seattle. Between 30th November, November 30th to December 3rd and 4th, I mean, it was hundreds of people here, thousands of people here who were protesting peacefully. We welcome everybody to join us in calling for an elected civilian review board with subpoena power. For the demilitarizing of the police department, what we saw was warfare, and we wanna know why we have warfare here. For outlawing the use of pepper spray, Australia outlawed it as a lethal weapon, and so we're calling for that here in Seattle. We also want the city council, the employee of the Seattle Police Force, and is ultimately responsible for the militarizing of this police department. This was a need-to-see action, we'd like to know how much all those uniforms and all that equipment cost that the police had on the other day, we wanna know where that money comes from, and did it come in with a law enforcement component? Also, we'd like to find out a question... Also, we'd like to find out, a question on the board is to find out if the police that was at the rally on Saturday, if they were on the clock. We wanna know if they were on the clock down there in the valley at Westlake Square. And if they're on the clock, we want them paid to be docked. They should not be paid for protesting that day in Westlake Square. Actually, we would like to also welcome everyone to join Mothers for Police Accountability. Our number is 3292033. Thanks.
Yes, I'm Cynthia and I signed up for Terry Alred, who's the Seattle spokesperson for the Revolutionary Communist Party, is gonna speak. And Donna Alexander also would like people, he's gonna lift his hat and file complaints with the Human Rights Commission. So I'm presenting a revolutionary sister, Terry Alred.
Hey, we're proud, very proud to stand shoulder to shoulder with all the people that poured across the border and poured out from out the country. Welcome those outside agitators. We sent a shout around the world, we did it. I have a quote I wanna read, it's an unknown quote, but the six-
Followed by number 35, John Manari. 36 is Gregory Gaddo.
I'd like to say hello, thanks, Andrew Roberts. Mike Weeby, first cut. Unfortunately, we had to have this situation happen here and a lot of you didn't really realize till this hit home. Once you get home, you feel it a little bit better. Police brutality is ridiculous. Only way that we're gonna be able to do something about this is, first and foremost, is hold the individuals accountable for their actions. Okay, I think we all need to thank the inventor of video cameras. I guess in incidents like Rodney King and other incidents, where they tell you, "Don't believe your eyes, but you better believe them." Okay, police attitudes. A few of us spoke on the attitudes of the police. Well, I think they need to be checked, okay? The cover-ups, cover-ups around the police department and other things. Well, first and foremost, if you don't feel like doing anything about them and if they can't do their jobs, they need to step up off. We also need to get together as a community and as a whole and as a large. Okay, we all are victims, okay? And if you don't know who's gonna be next.
Followed by Gregory and then Barry Ellis will be number 37.
Hi, everyone. First of all, I must say I've enjoyed all the speakers. And if I stay till 10 o'clock tonight, I have a feeling I'll continue to do the same. My name is John Manari, I'm a Seattle native and resident. I work in the software industry and I participated in the AFL-CIO march on Tuesday, November 30th. Before I go on to my main point, I wanna just ask my fellow protesters, what we could have done to prevent some of the looting? You know, I think it's up to organizers, the AFL-CIO, Direct Action Network, to perhaps hire uniformed person, uniformed security personnel. Wait, wait, it gets better. The reason why is, in ideal world, the police would have been out there to protect private property and people from injury, that didn't happen. What we need, perhaps it's up to ourselves.
My name is Gregory Gaddo, I am a resident of Capitol Hill and a national organizer for the American Liberal Party. I've been hearing over the last two weeks, many people calling for a recall of Mayor Shell. For good or bad, the city charter does not allow for the recall of the mayor. He can be impeached, but only on charges of dereliction of duty or moral turpitude. Therefore, I would like to submit to the city council two proposed amendments to the city charter. I do have printed copies available for the media if they would like to take a look at them. The first one would amend Article 5, I'm sorry, Article 5, Section 10 of the charter to add malfeasance and abuse of executive authority as impeachable offenses. The second amendment would create Article 5, Section 11, Section 10 of this article, to remove the mayor from office. While I realize that these two measures would not be directly actionable on-
My name is Barry Ellis, I'm a supporter of the Revolutionary Communist Party. I was one of the people that was arrested on Broadway on Wednesday night, December 1st, by undercover police. My violation was spouting to possess a Molotov cocktail. Which actually was a bottle of water. Nevertheless, that didn't stop, that didn't stop the press and the police from repeating this lie that there was Molotov cocktails on Broadway, to pull the bottle of water out of somebody's backpack and said, "Here it is, the Molotov cocktail." But that's some of the documented violence of the protesters. And as luck would have it, I was arrested on Broadway and Johns, that's the fifth time that I've been arrested on Broadway and Johns, and that quarter, the fifth time. By these motherfuckers.